At this time, I'd like to call the this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:02 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Here.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Here.
Councilmember LeBlanc.
Here.
Councilmember Copley is absent. Vice President Verducci.
Here.
President Lima.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will now accept public comment on docketed items only, those items on our agenda this evening. Any members of the public come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Any members of the public on Zoom, public comment on docketed items only? Please raise your hand to be let in. Public comment going once, twice, three times, public comment is now closed. We'll now move to introduction of new matters before the council. Members of the public tonight is kind of the kickoff of the the public portion of our of our budget process for the FY '26 budget. Our budget operates on a July 1 to June 30 calendar. And this evening is going to be the the first time where department heads and other staff members come and help provide some color as to their request, and the town manager and other administration will provide background as well. So this is just, this is the first, the first step in the in the process in terms of the council's involvement. So this is the first night, and tomorrow night, we will have additional departments, including the school department. So I will turn it over to Manager Prillo at this point.
Good evening, council members. You have the budget that we sent over on Friday. We took a different approach this year. Normally, at this first meeting, all you get are the department directors' requests outlined in the budget. This year, we decided to kind of jump ahead a week. So now you currently have the department directors' requests and my request, my budget that I'm going to be putting forward officially on the 25th during my presentation. We thought it'd give the council more time to see what the directors wanted and what Director Suvetti and I decided upon, looking at the big picture as opposed to just one individual department. So as we go through, what you're going to see changes between what the departments asked for and what Director Suvetti and I concluded on. Some departments, we gave more to, others, we took from. Again, the goal is to get everything the council's looking for, that we're looking for administratively, within a reasonable tax increase. So I think that's overall what you're going to see here during the presentation, and I just wanted to start off summarizing why you have those two separate individual columns in the budget.
All right.
The council, if you want to just get right into it, Madam President.
Yes.
Council's the same. It's the same salaries from last year.
Excuse me, does Mr. Houghton have the budget to share as we go slide? Okay. Thank you.
The only increase, to my recollection, Director Suvetti, is the full year for seven council members, correct?
Yeah.
That's the only, that's the $4,000 increase. Any questions on that?
Any discussion from the council?
Next is town managers. We're going to have one correction on that one. We're going to be moving under benefits. We're going to be having one family plan as opposed to one single plan. So that's going to be an addition to what that increase is currently. The town managers got 3% raise with the other directors, and the addition of the healthcare is the only other change in here. If you want to note, that we did put a line in here for Johnson's Pond. It was 5,000. We reduced it to 3,000. And right now, that's utilized for the gatekeepers' utility bill. That's what that line is used for currently. Everything else is pretty much the same.
Also in there, just to clarify, you'll see under the benefits, the significant increase in the life insurance. That was an error in the previous year's budget. Each employee, as you know, is part of a group term life insurance policy here. And we had that amount. That amount was budgeted for two employees here, whereas, under the contract that this council has with the town manager, he has an additional benefit for life insurance. So we updated that so that it included the full cost of that benefit.
Any discussion from the council?
Next, we have town clerk. The increase you see there, under the town clerk's salary, is she received a increase mid-year last year for additional duties she was doing. So that that 10% that's there currently is not 10%. It's 10% from last year, but it's incremental. Like I said, she got, I want to say it was 6% or 7% mid-year, and she got the additional 3% that all the other directors got. So that's why hers says 10.03 as opposed to 3%. We did eliminate temporary employees from her budget. We also reduced advertising in her budget. So the overall increase is 1.82%. Joanne is here, if you want to have any questions for her.
Vice President Verducci.
Yeah, just a quick question. On the temp employees, is that going to hinder anything that you've got going on? Or is that something you're able to absorb?
No, that should be fine. We had that in there when we had retirees, so that we can work into a temp in there when they were taking their vacation time and comp time and all that. So just to cover full staff.
Any other discussion from the council? My question might be to both the manager and Madam Clerk. How are we feeling in terms of the ability to handle the workload of the clerk's office with the current staffing? Does it, is it adequate?
I think it's adequate right now, but I'll let Joanne comment.
I do believe that it is adequate at this time. We did have a turnover in staff, and we just hired a new great clerk, Tayla, who has been doing phenomenal. So, and Carrie's been here now a little over a year, and she's doing great, and Elizabeth's doing great. So we're full staff, and everybody's fully trained, so I think we should be okay.
Anything else on the clerk's budget? Vice President Verducci.
This might be more for Dan, just so I don't have to ask a question each time. Is the waivers for healthcare, is that bargained? Or is that something we're doing?
It is for directors. It is-
In general, even. Yeah, I'm new to that topic.
There's a stipend in the Council 94 contract and the police contract, and there's also one that the administration follows. We're right now working on the personnel rules that'll dictate that in writing, but right now, it's more like past practice.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Probate and municipal.
So for municipal court, obviously, we still have the vacancy in the judge's position. Judge Bland is filling that in currently. He's getting an increase in his in his stipend for handling both duties. Overall, the clerk, the municipal court is not going to have a dedicated clerk. Joanne and her department are going to take over that role. So you are going to see some savings there. We put some overtime into the clerk's budget in order to accommodate some of these responsibilities, but overall, it's a decrease in the municipal court budget because we've gotten rid of the dedicated clerk.
Discussion on municipal or probate? Thank you.
And probate status quo, same, no changes to probate, probate judge. Board of canvassers, we have quite a change in board of canvassers. The large decrease in the overall budget is because there are no elections this fiscal year, so that there's no need to hire poll workers or any additional staff. So with Lori Anderson's retirement, we are going to hire, which you guys just swore in, or approved the swearing in of Marcy Alves as the registrar. The goal is also to get her a full-time clerk come July 1st. So that's what the additional salary is within that budget, within that line item. But still, as you can see, because we are not hiring temporary staff, that overall budget is reduced this year.
What's the difference between clerk and clerk of board of canvassers?
I think it's just how it was classified within the system.
Okay.
Again, we're just, in this budget, we're just budgeting for the clerk position at $45,500, which would be a full-time clerk for next fiscal year, as well as salary.
So we don't think that we should have anything in the budget at all, or, knock on wood, any potential with the budget having to go to a referendum?
There's room in how to put that in there, but we are, I'm confident this council can get a budget passed.
I love, I love the confidence, but I do think we should consider a budget scenario that answers that.
Yeah, we'll find out what that number is.
Any other council members on BOC?
Bob, you want to take finance?
Right, so really, the significant increase in the finance department's budget, you know, this council's had discussions over the past year, maybe longer, about adding an additional position into the finance department. So this budget includes a deputy finance director line item and $100,000 per year with the related benefits. So overall, you could see the total proposed budget increase is roughly $190,000 or 7%, which again, primarily is attributable to that additional position. We've recently advertised for the position. We've received a number of applications that we're in the process of going through at this point. Again, it's, I guess, my, my hope that, you know, we have that position, there will really be a mix, right? Some finance personnel, but also related to, you know, purchasing. So having a purchasing agent, somebody that's fully, fully familiar with the state MPA and Saucewell and going out to bid, all those items, as well as contractual, you know, contracts. So reviewing various contracts that each department may get, grant agreements and those type of items. But that's really the most significant increase there. You'll see there's an increase in auditing, you know, just based on the response to the RFP that we had received. You know, we're currently in, under agreement with our current auditor, CLA, for the next two years. And then just some general increases in, you know, utilities based on where we're currently trending, insurance liability. At this point, we haven't received what our new rates are. So, you know, at this time, those are strictly estimates based on where we finished or where we are in the current fiscal year, what we expect next year's premiums to be at.
Discussion on the finance department from the council. Can we jump, Bob, to revenues for a second in terms of finance? So I noticed the bump is in addition to, we're, we're taking the Aron Road solar revenue and assuming it'll just go there until the council directs otherwise?
Correct. At this point, we just included that as a general fund revenue source. If this council wanted to earmark that for special projects and have it outside of the general fund budget, then we would have to remove that and make up the $110,000. But right now, that's budgeted as just general revenue.
Okay. Good to know. I guess for the rest of the council, I think we might, we should, we should consider where that could go and best be productive. I don't know if we maybe consider a resolution where, or ordinance that it goes into the capital revolving fund to make money on itself, considering it's not going to be a forever source of funding. But maybe something to think about, people can launch on that. Anything else on finance? So essentially, the increase in the expenditure side is the deputy position. Okay. Right.
For HR, the big changes are the two components that really are under the director's responsibility. The pension increase is $86,000, and workers' comp is $55,000. So those are the two big increases for the department. Everything else is relatively the same going forward for the HR department.
So again, just add those, those two amounts there, again, are estimates at this time. We don't have the actual amounts. We're currently going through the process of getting the final information from our workers' comp audit for the 2023-24 fiscal year, and then obviously, end of this year, to look at that. As you know, the, we get the actuary determined contribution amount from our actuaries on an annual basis. So, you know, that gets us up to being a, funding exactly what the actuaries recommend, which was what we obviously tried to do with the police pension and the municipal pension. We want to make sure we're staying in line with what the actuaries say we should be funding to hopefully get up to that 100% funding, you know, down the line.
Discussion from the council. Vice President Verducci.
A much smaller number. Looking at the temporary helpline, I don't see any actuals. Would we, do we anticipate needing that? Is that something we keep in case, with, you know, with an HR function, where might you get temps for?
Yeah, so if I can answer that, Dan. The temporary line, it's part of the HR budget. That's really to help any department. So if we have a department that didn't have a temporary line item, a temporary employee, they can draw from that budget, similar to where we have in this line item, employee investment program.
That's my next question.
Yeah. You know, again, same, same type of thing where that, that's basically a townwide, you know, the various town departments. Most of the town departments do have, you know, professional development within their budget. But if, for some reason, we had an additional person, we wanted to attend a seminar, conference, training, something of that sort, that would draw into this budget.
Other discussion on human resources budget? All right.
Next is the solicitor's budget. That's staying status quo, same number, $680,000. No changes to that.
Questions, discussion from the council?
Tax collection?
The tax collection department is, we changed, we got rid of the deputy tax collector. Now we have two clerks in there. That's the change in wording there.
We, I think IT was before.
IT? Okay. IT.
Cody, we're watching out for you up here.
It's just Cody. That's all we got. So we're increasing Cody's temporary help. Talking about needing additional help. We're thinking probably next year, we're going to need another full-time person in IT, but I'll let Cody speak to that.
Sir, you just have to put your mouth right up to the microphone.
Directly into it?
Yes.
Thank you. This is really hard to do. I don't know if I can manage it.
Sorry, I had to.
Sorry. Do we have any direct questions, or you just want me to go through the changes and? Okay, so one of the big increases will be for the, our financial software Keystone is going up by, I don't know the percentage, but about $10,000 a year. That was one of the biggest gains. Also in that line item for software licensing is another piece of software that is moving to a subscription base instead of perpetual, so that's now going to be a recurring cost. I'd rather not mention the name of the software provider, but that is, we can speak afterwards if you'd like. Other changes in website and hosting service, there was a 5% increase to one of our other software services. I removed 5,000 from the professional services line. That was mostly because we were paying for essentially yearly training for the Keystone software. That will now be coming out of Bob's budget if we end up doing it this fiscal year. And as Dan mentioned, I added 2,000 to the temporary helpline. I'll be getting two, hopefully getting two temporary AV helpers to assist with these meetings.
Any questions, discussion for the T director of the budget? Vice President Verducci?
Just something for Cody, and then for us to kind of think about, too. Is this one of the areas where it's, you know, common practice to have a good backup? You know, we all know how much help Bob needs. But, you know, is this the kind of situation where you could see yourself needing, you know, a deputy IT person? Or is it something you can pick up with, you know, someone more kind of below you as we look towards the future?
Yeah, we could probably talk about that next fiscal year. I don't know if it'll need to be another full-time person. We can kind of figure that out. The big unknown is the annex project. After that's done, it's kind of an unknown right now exactly what's going to be in there as far as IT needs. But what's specked out right now, we're essentially doubling the size of the town's IT network by putting that over there. Me and Mike Broge, the IT guy, police department, often talk about maybe getting someone to split between us. That's might be something to talk about as the time comes. But it's one of those things, yeah, I'd love to have, be able to go on vacation and just know stuff's covered would be something I've never had. But, uh, we'll see.
Councilman Blank.
Just curious, Cody, as it relates to Keystone, you said part of the significant increase is their contract. Part of that contract, do we have hours with them if we ever want to do an enhancement? Or is that something that goes above and beyond, outside of the contract?
I think it's above and beyond. I think originally, in the five-year, we might have, remember?
I think there is a portion. I can get you the contract, but I believe there is a portion in the contract for some, you know, assistance. But then we can buy blocks at a discounted rate in addition to that.
All right.
You know, as Cody mentioned, the contract, or the agreement is going up significantly. They recently merged or were acquired by another company, and they were reviewing the contracts and said, you know, you haven't had an increase in years, and based on what you're currently paying versus other software. So we have actually looked at some other companies, and with the rate they're going at now, it's in the ballpark with some of the other communities are paying. So even with the increase, we don't see where significantly.
Got it. All right, thanks.
Anything else for IT? All right, thank you.
So tax collection. Monique's here, if you guys have any questions for her. But like I said, we removed the deputy's position. We have two clerks there. We also removed one of the healthcare waivers, so that was the savings. It's not, not a large department, based healthcare went down as well. So that's why you're seeing the overall savings there in that department.
Yeah, and just to clarify, as far as the deputy tax collector's position, that's something we looked at filling last year, removing one of the clerks, making a deputy tax collector. But then there were different changes in personnel, so it didn't go that avenue. So currently, we are operating with two clerks, which is what we're proposing to continue on with for fiscal 2026.
Yes?
So is that the deputy is not going to be filled?
Correct.
That's correct. So currently, it's blank, right? So you have the tax collector's proposed salaries at $90,000. Deputy tax collector in the initial department director's budget was 61,316. We're showing that at zero. And it's all been moved down to the clerk's line, where there was original proposed budget of 53,271. Now we're showing that budget of $110,893. So that's two clerks.
All right, I might have an old copy. I got a deputy tax assessor at 73 in 2026.
Yep, we're on the collector's line. You're on the assessor's.
Ugh, learning.
The assessor, the assessor's office will be here tomorrow.
Gotcha.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you. My fault.
Anything else on collector?
Building, building official.
Building department.
So for building, the increase for the building inspector is the large number there. That gentleman came to us a little over a year ago. He has since gotten two state certifications as a building inspector, with the next goal of him becoming a building official. Not that we want to get rid of Chuck, but gives us some options. So that's, that's the increase in that department. Also, under electrical, the goal is to potentially hire the electrical inspector as a full-time position come January. is to, uh, potentially, uh, hire the electrical inspector as a full-time position comes January, based on the needs of the department. So Chuck can go into that if you guys like. Um, obviously you know, there's a lot going on with Center of New England and so forth. And, uh, we see a potential need there for a full-time electrical inspector. So we're planning for that in that budget line item.
Yeah. So to that end, I think we've had this conversation about having the capacity to inspect all of this and make sure that we're, we've got quality development. Um, I'd rather we ramp up to the funding that's required for that capacity than you come to me in a one fiscal year and say, I need this chunk.
Hmm.
So I'd say, let's have that conversation now, even if we may not need that capacity in the next fiscal year. I, I think we should have the conversation at this point so we can plan for that.
Yeah. And I think that's what this, this budget's doing where like I said, the, and electrical inspector, we think is the, is the position that we're going to need full-time. And that's why it's planned for, um, for January. But are we going to let Chuck speak to that further?
Sitting next to Savetti, I'd leave with less money. Yes. So we have some projections with all this, uh, new planning coming up in town. And I spoke to Dan about it and I don't need a full-time electrical inspector now, but it's easier to start at this time of the year. Um, and perhaps in January we need it, February, whatever. It's easier to input it then if it's already in the budget. Yeah. I think we're, I think we'll be good. We still have a professional, uh, services contract that we can utilize if we, uh, fall behind. But some of these developments may not even start in this fiscal year. You know, they take a little time to get going.
Anyone questions or comments? Vice President Farducci?
Sorry, just being new here. So appreciate your time. Uh, any sense of kind of where we stand currently? I know the development's coming, but are you experiencing backlogs in any kind of one sector or another right now as far as inspections?
Not at all.
Okay.
Even across the board.
Go to you. Thank you.
We're close to or at, um, our projected revenue for the year and we haven't even been super busy. It's seasonal, right? And then, but it's been extended this year, a little past season.
Sure. I don't know why Dan saw against you then. Thank you.
We'll talk about that some other time. Thank you.
Under, uh, next is Coventry Housing Authority. That's status quo. That's just the salaries for their board members, um, that the council appoints. So that's the same. Engineering, if I can find it, I believe is the same. So engineering is just the, uh, the salary, uh, raises for the director and the assistant engineering technician to 3%. Um, everything else is, is the same.
Comments, questions for engineering? Okay.
Okay.
Human services?
There's library next to, oh no, human services.
Services, right. Yeah.
Bob?
Um, Bob, if you want to come up and explain anything. Um, human services is, uh, status quo. Um, again, the 3% increase, uh, in salaries across the board contractual and for, uh, the administrative staff. And, um, Bob can answer any questions. As you all know that Bob has tons of programs going on there. Uh, he hosted the governor and lieutenant governor last week, uh, in his building. So, uh, we're very, uh, very happy to see that we're getting that type of statewide, um, acknowledgement that they're actually making their way out to Coventry. Um, and I think it's because what, all the good work that Bob does. So that's where we are with the budget.
Anything you'd like to add, uh, Director Obillard?
For the first time, no.
Um, I don't know if you want to share with the council, you and I had talked last week. We have a, we have a more definitive timeline on the free vans that we were promised two years ago.
Can definitely talk about that. I actually got some specs on, uh, logoing today. So, um, it seems like it's, it was a hundred years ago that we started this process. Um, but it looks like, uh, they'll be finished being built and, and ready for delivery, um, the middle of June. Uh, but they have to come from West Virginia to get here. So, um, they, we should get them, cause they built them from, uh, from our spec. So, uh, it's there's, they're 12, uh, plus two. So there's wheelchair lift, 14, uh, passenger and we're getting three vans. We're the only municipality that's getting more than one in the state due to rural transportation needs. And, um, we should be getting them in July. I think it'll be a great start to the new fiscal year. Um, since they're not costing the town, um, any money, uh, we will have the vans, uh, they'll be owned by Ripta for five years and then we will, it's basically like a, a, a free lease and then they're going to sign them over to the town. So we'll have them going forward.
Questions for the human services director? Oh, uh, Councilman Pasqua.
Should we, um, once we have these vans, um, you know, we're used to using and we have these three vans, should we get a program to, we start putting some money away to replace them in a few years if you're?
We presently have four vans that we're running every single day. Um, so we're, our goal is to sell those vans. Um, we're probably going to keep one of them, the, one of our smaller vans, a newest van. Um, but we had talked, uh, previously about utilizing the funds from the sale of those vans to be put into a fund specific for repairs. Because when you get three vans at the same time, you're going to get the repairs coming in all around the same time. So if we have good luck the first couple of years with them and have to do minimal maintenance, that would be great. And that the goal is to, uh, utilize those funds, hopefully. You know, we've had conversations on, you know, the best way to do that so that it ultimately really isn't costing the taxpayers of Coventry anything other than what we're doing now with our van drivers insurance and obviously repairs and, uh, fuel, which we're doing anyway.
What do you usually get on a lifespan of these? Are they diesel or gas?
They're gas. Um, I can't tell you what the lifespan is because I've gotten three different answers. So it depends on, you know, how they're running, how they're maintained. I can tell you, we maintain our, our, our vehicles very, um, very much, um, we seem to replace every single nut and bolt on, on one of them. Um, but the whole goal is to have the funds set aside so that it's not impacting, uh, budget, you know, and impacting costs on the, uh, the residents. So.
Just, uh, Councilman, to answer your question, I think, you know, valid point, what we should look at doing is probably in the fiscal 2027 budget, create a line item where we would set the money into a capital projects, capital improvement fund, either our capital lease fund, where you say we're setting that aside so much each year so that as they do, you know, as the time comes to have to purchase new vehicles rather than going out and having to finance them or bond those purchases, we have the funds already available. A lot easier to budget, you know, 20,000 a year to go into a fund versus getting it all at once for a hundred thousand dollar vehicle, 150. We'll definitely look at that.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah. So I was thinking, you know, buy three new vehicles and that's going to be your fleet all at the same time. I just kind of have visions of trash trucks all over again. So, yeah, no, great. Perfect. Sounds like you got it.
Uh, Councilman Brown?
Uh, Director, who does the maintenance? Is it DPW or you sub it out?
We, we sub it out. Yeah. The, um, we've had multiple contractors. Um, and, uh, basically we have such, we have a really good working relationship with the local, um, repair shop that does all of our, our vans at this point. And, um, they give us a very, uh, fair price in, in the process and, uh, they'll take the, the vehicle in immediately. Because we're tra, we're not, we're not transporting widgets. We're transporting people and they need to be safe and, uh, in the best repairs. So.
Uh, Vice President Farducci?
Just a, a quick question. You, you mentioned insurance. So maybe Bob, is it, um, is that budgeted centralized or where do we have our lines for, you know, insurance is getting so expensive?
Yeah. So the insurance is all under the finance department category. Work is comped on the human, uh, resources. The basic property and liability insurance is under the finance department's budget.
Gotcha. And to the director, you said Ripta's going to own them for the first five years? Are they going to pay for the insurance?
No. We have a contract already in, in place with, uh, excuse me, in place with Ripta, um, that, that council, um, signed, signed off on along with the manager to, um, do exactly like I said, we were going to get the, initially the, the Ripta wanted to do 80% and the town was going to be responsible for 20. And, um, because of the one-time ARPA funds, we were able to have them pay 100% of the cost of the vans to, uh, to be built and purchased. And, uh, the, the only caveat was the five-year under the ownership of the state and then they would just sign it over to us. You're welcome.
Anything else for human services? All right. Thank you.
I'm going for library with Lauren. I know you guys have had a lot of discussions on this budget.
So the, the library budget, there's actually two components, right? You had department 930 and then fiscal 24 was the first year we added, added the grant and aid, uh, department. We just tried, you know, those that were on the council or just out of the public may remember that grant and aid was never reported in the general fund. When Dan and I came in, we thought it should just be part of the general fund, show that state aid similar to how we show all the other state aid that comes into the town. So this is Lauren's first shot at the budget, right? As you know, she took over as the director, you know, a few months back. Um, so you may see some different changes, but realistically it's, you know, when you see a salary li, line item that used to be in the grant and aid budget versus the library budget, it's just moving from one side to the other. So you really have to, in my opinion, look at the two as a whole. And I'll, Lauren, walk through our budget.
Um, I guess I should ask if you have any specific questions or if you'd prefer me to just give an overview? There are some changes.
Overview of the highlight, you know, the, and significant changes would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so there are a few routine increases, um, the 3% salary increase and increases to the healthcare and dental. Um, an increase to the healthcare waivers. We now have two staff waiving healthcare instead of one. Um, and utilities are going up. So there's an increase there. I think the major thing to point out is that we, we pay a fixed amount of Cody's IT salary every year. Um, normally that comes out of the town budget to make up for some staffing and healthcare increases. I moved that into grant and aid. Um, it's also a lot easier to budget and grant and aid for things that are fixed instead of like having to budget for raises if I had moved, um, staff salaries, like library staff salaries into grant and aid. Um, so I don't know if it shows, does it show the IT line from last year? So that'll be zero in the town budget and then in the grant and aid, that goes up like $39,000. So that's just moving it from one budget to the other. And then to make up for that and offset some of it, I moved some of our non-print budget from grant and aid into the town budget. Um, so when you see the non-book materials line item, that's what that is. Um, and I actually reduced the non-print budget, but because I moved some into town, it looks like a large increase.
See under like the fringe benefits, obviously some significant increases in the healthcare, dental. That's rarely related to the personnel, right? You have some employees that were at the library. They've gotten married or, you know, things have changed. So they're going from a single plan to a family plan and just, you know, perspective of, a family plan runs a town about 19,000 change per year. With a single plan's 8,000 change per year. So, you know, one switch in those plans, obviously is a significant number. So that's why you see some of the large percentage increases when you look at, you know, just in the library's general fund, the department 930 budget, you went, you're going up 56%, you know, only 2,200, but it's 56%. Healthcare is going up 28%. Again, that's just really a change in the personnel or the benefits being provided to certain personnel.
Bob advised me to advise my staff not to get married, but I didn't think that I could control that.
Uh, Councilman Blank?
Mr. Savetti, Lee, because you brought up healthcare. I know we pay, uh, for employees who actually choose not to go on our healthcare plan. Uh, what is the total dollar amount that we're paying those employees as a stipend?
An employee that'll has a fa, would have family coverage, they get a stipend of 4,300 per year. Um, those that are individual get 2,000 per year. Um, police contracts, a little different. Police officers don't elect coverage. They get half of the annual premium. So currently that's around, on a family plan, be about 11,000 per year.
It's a lot. Um, have we ever done an analysis on what other towns are doing for waivers? And those type of stipends?
We have not. I can certainly look out. We can reach out to League of Cities and Towns, see if we can get that figured.
I would appreciate that. If you could. Thanks.
Other discussion on the library budget? All right. Thank you.
Next is Parks and Rec. I want to have Scott come up. Um, I sent all of you, uh, his plan for Briar Point. I know Briar Point was a hotspot last year of, uh, why isn't it open? What can we do? Loud music, um, parking, a lot of issues that I know the council, um, got a lot of feedback from the community on. So this year we tried to incorporate all of those issues, um, with a plan. Um, obviously this is Scott's first year, first time dealing with this. So we are going to, um, have Briar Point repaved this spring as part of some of the leftover ARPA funds we have, have it lined, have all the signs, appropriate signage put up. And we do have a plan to have both someone at the gate Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and also someone, a, a marshal or a guard, kind of walking around and enforcing, uh, smoking, drinking, loud music and so forth. So, uh, I sent you guys the plan just as a, a precursor to what Scott's going to explain tonight.
Yeah. So I, I had put that together just as, um, I guess, a, a roadmap of where we can go at Briar. Um, I think that what we're proposing and what we're trying to do this year is a good first step. Um, as I, I've told, uh, Dan and some others, I think this, there's going to be a lot of work in progress. Um, we're going to take what we do this year. We are going to learn from it and continue, uh, to make changes. Um, as I believe that facility has not been manned since COVID, uh, so that I think there's a lot of habits that have been formed around there that have to be broken. Uh, we're not going to be able to do that in, in one summer and, uh, make everybody happy. But I think what we can do is put some, some structure in place in year one, learn from it, see what works, see what doesn't work. Nick, take the next step in year two, in year three, in year four. Um, so a, as Dan mentioned, um, that's what I had sent to him as far as my thoughts of what we should, how we should run Briar this year. Um, I, I'm definitely open to suggestions, but, um, I, I think, you know, having staff there, I think, I think can help. Um, and then we'll continue to, uh, figure out what, what works over there and, and make that a place that residents in particular will want to go back to. So in, in the, in the budget and our temporary sta, uh, employee line item is, uh, close to 17,000 for Briar Point, um, staff for, uh, Memorial Day to Labor Day, uh, staffing Friday, Saturday, Sunday, having a gate attendant. Uh, we do plan to sell parking passes, uh, and also having someone there, um, who will kind of monitor the behavior over there.
Uh, questions from the council? Uh, Councilman Pasqua?
Does any of this, uh, require any ordinances or anything based on a lot of the rules they were putting forward for this? Anything on the legal side?
I think his email mentioned that we need ordinances about parking on. I think his email mentioned that we need ordinances about parking on the surrounding streets. Yeah.
I thought it might. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if that would be for this year or for a following year, but I think modeling what Jamestown does, they have, in the ordinance specifically, would name Mackerel Cove Beach where you can park, when you can park inside the parking lot, where you can park or not park outside of the parking lot, I think. You know, as I said, I don't know if that would be something that we would do this year. Maybe it's something we take a look at, see how that whole parking situation is arranged, how it works out, how much pressure is put on the police department to pick it and to respond over there, and then I think act accordingly to what is being seen over there.
Councilman Capaldi.
As we know, parking is a pain over there. So I read through your proposal. What would be the slap on the wrist? I mean, I heard you say ticket, but how many times does somebody have to do something wrong before they get a ticket? Do they get a ticket immediately if they're in the wrong, you're not a resident, you're supposed to be parking over here? No, wait a minute, you are visiting, you're over here. I mean, it is confusing when I was reading it. I know it's a proposal, but what do you, what do you think about if they keep abusing the system, are they not allowed back?
Correct.
Okay.
I think what we can, what we can do, which if we're trying to bring residents back to Tioga, then I think maybe having a certain number of spots designated for residents only. We will sell parking passes, have to prove if, for a resident rate, have to prove you're a resident. So I think what we can do is have the staff that's there have a violation book. I mean, it doesn't carry the weight of the police, but at least it lets us know, hey, somebody either somehow got in without a pass or is parking in the wrong place without a pass, or, and then what we can do is then, as a department, revoke that pass. So having somebody at the gate would be important, so you control who goes in and who goes out. And also, having somebody, having staff there will be helpful at the end of the night as well. Controlling the behavior during the day, but then also at night. So having somebody there can monitor that and kind of address those issues with the cooperation of the police department.
I know there's not specific dates of when this is gonna happen yet, but did you, in your budget, account for more heads, bodies to be doing these positions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. In our temporary employee lineup, there's about seventeen thousand for. I'm figuring two gate attendants, you know, either splitting shift, two, possibly more, depending on, you know, if people have vacations, if people are, depending on their availability. Only one at a time at the gate, but you might need multiple on staff, as well as a couple of beach monitors, beach security to do that function as well, yes. So I would say it would be, it would be important to know how the council wants to proceed in as timely a manner as possible so that if we're going to staff it over there, we know, I know, and I can proceed, and my department can proceed, to start looking for people. Because I don't want to wait until we get into, if we're looking at a Memorial Day opening, I don't want to wait until the end of April to start advertising for people. We can start, we're already taking in applications for camp counselors and summer staff, so it would be nice to get on board with that and start finding some qualified people, whether they're high school kids, college kids, adults looking for a part-time job, quality individuals who would be willing to do that work over there.
Councilman Brown.
Thanks for bringing it forward. I mean, it's a step in the right direction. I mean, it's been a problem over there for a lot of years, and with bringing this forward, it's, like I said, a first step. I'm sure the residents over there are gonna like it, and if we gotta build on it in the future, we will. But it's something that we have to get control of over there, so thank you, Scott, for bringing that forward.
I definitely think it is something we're gonna have to build on, and I've mentioned to the association that this is year one. We're gonna, we're gonna do what we can in year one, and there's gonna be issues. There's gonna be, they're gonna call me, and there's gonna be things that they're gonna be upset about. And I told them, it's gonna be, how do we react to those? In the immediate and in the far future, what changes can we make over there? So I think this year is kind of a learning year, trying to get it under control. And I don't, I don't know how many parking passes we'll sell. We'll see, you know, what happens. I don't know exactly what will happen over there, but I think we'll take this year as a learning year and then come back and say, okay, this is what worked. This is what didn't work, so let's make some changes next year and then the year after that, and eventually, we'll, I think, we'll get that.
Yeah, no, I agree, and maybe we can get Jerry to smile just a little bit.
And I think, I think too, this is gonna be the foundation of what Johnson's Pond's public space is gonna look like. Obviously, what we're doing here, the trial and error, and we can probably put to use whatever future space looks like at Johnson's Pond.
Can I make?
I was just gonna say, make sure you have police on speed dial. Smile? No? I try, Jerry, I try.
Councilman Capaldi.
I would just make a suggestion in your proposal, like any strategy that many people work in in their real jobs, have a plan A, B, I mean, B, C, and D, because you don't want to wait until next year to correct the problem. As the problems, you see after a couple of weeks as a problem, you have that next plan to fall into, and then you execute that to make everything move forward. You have to do it that way. If not, you're gonna have a whole wasted summer.
It's President Verducci.
Just a quick question. Is the lifeguard, the plans for that, is that still an issue that, I know we had some trouble in the past around the state looking for lifeguards?
Yeah, there is no plan currently for lifeguards for this year. We actually did get a grant from the trust to put a lifeguard, lifeguard ring over there, so that there's a case has a ring in it. So in absence of lifeguards, it doesn't replace a lifeguard, but if there's an issue particularly later in the day, then anybody, a user of the beach can run over there, open it up, use it, and save somebody over there. But I think that is something.
Like a college blue light?
Yeah, yeah. Somebody will be there, you know, can actually be the lifesaver themselves. But I think lifeguards for the future is definitely something we should consider. There is a shortage of lifeguards, so that is something that we need to jump on quickly. We're competing with the state, all of their beaches, they have shortages. Other communities, nearby communities have shortages. So that is something, when we're ready to add lifeguards and that cost, then let's figure out early, because I would start trying to hire lifeguards now and attract them now, rather than wait until April or May and try and get them.
Gotcha. And then one more follow-up. I know you reached out to the association. Any more community engagement scheduled before, you know, you formalize your plan anymore? Or have you kind of reached out to everyone and heard from other neighbors, maybe not in the association?
The association and I have, and Dan have had conversations, so I think this is the first time that Jerry's kind of hearing this. So I'm sure he and I will have a conversation, and many conversations. So I'll definitely be willing to hear his input.
And the association is really gonna play a role in this. I mean, they help us with the gates in the morning. They're kind of our eyes and ears out there, so it's important to have that relationship and keep that communication going.
Maybe a potential lifeguard.
I'd like, make sure he has updated certification, that's all I ask.
A couple of questions, Director. So it sounds, so what is the total investment at the end of the day in Briar Point in this attempt, this first year of trying to staff this up? Did you say, is it the temporary employees?
Pretty much, yeah, because the paving and the striping has already been set aside. So, you know, there's some signage that needs to be fixed, that's a nominal cost. But I think the large, the big first step this year is the staffing. And that will be, that will be the first step this year, and then we can see after that if there's, you know, the next step, if we add lifeguards at additional cost. We'd have to see if our lifeguard chairs, they've been up in our storage for several years, just gotta make sure that those are still okay. So, yeah, the staffing would be the big cost for this year.
Yeah. So I might recommend that there be, you know, as you continue meetings to get ready, I might recommend, I think we've talked about this, we need, the council needs some direction from yourself and the police department to know what ordinances do you need to help enforce, I guess, law and order over there.
Yeah.
So we're ready to help, but we need to know what you need.
Yeah.
And understanding that the ordinance process takes multiple weeks of a first reading, advertising, second reading, like
Yeah.
public hearing, so, so just, I'm putting it out there, we're happy to help, but we just need the advance notice, and we want to do it in advance of Memorial Day, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. My other question was, in special events, I noticed a twenty-nine thousand dollar increase. Is that trying to fill the gap that was once filled by one-time ARPA funds, or is that something in particular?
No, that is, so our event manager, she has added a trip, an East Coast trip, going along New York City, Philadelphia. So the programs that we run, so that's where that increase comes from. The programs that we run, the events that we run, those kind of trips, camp, are all run either cost-neutral or to a positive. So we will get that money back through the fees that we will charge to attend that trip, but that's where that increase comes from.
And then repair and maintenance, I saw you, your wish list was forty K, but the manager pulled it back to twenty-five. I'm just curious what you were envisioning for that additional up to forty K?
In that line item, we include for crack ceiling of several courts at Payne, at Hunter's, I believe at Raven, the skate park and the basketball court at Payne, so that's, that can usually be relatively pricey. So if it's put back in, that'll be good. If not, we will do what we need to do.
Yeah.
One of our thoughts for the reduction, they do have impact fees that are available for Recreation Department, so we were looking at possibly using the impact fees to help fill that gap.
Appreciate that call-out. Anything else for the Parks Department? Councilman Pasqua.
I may have missed it. Do we budget for our summer event that we've been doing the past few years?
Yeah, we ramped up to that with ARPA. I think the first year we did it was mostly ARPA, and then last year, I think we baked it in.
Yeah, Kim does a great job with that. I mean, she's really an event coordinator and a fundraiser. She gets a lot of donations from the community that go towards funding that activity, that whole day, along with the fireworks, so that is gonna happen. And like I said, it's baked into this budget right now.
Councilman, on the second page of the Recreation Department's budget, if you look up all five lines from the bottom, I believe it's all accounted in there where it has entertainment.
Okay, yeah, so the eleven-two.
There. All of their events, as they have.
That event in particular, Kim works very, very hard to get donations, to get sponsorships for that. So a lot of the costs, that's a big cost to run that event, and she has worked very, very hard. So that's really on her to give her credit, to generate that revenue, to, or that funding, to get up to where it needs to be to put that event on. Which is, can be a little difficult because she's also trying to get up sponsorships for summer concert series, which happens at the same time. So she's kind of working, working double time, working all angles and trying to get as much sponsorship as she can.
I just wonder, do we put a little bit of a contingency in there as a reserve in case she doesn't meet a deadline or a financial obligation? Only because we've been doing it now, and, you know, we don't really want to let the people down. That's been a request for years, and we finally got it off the ground.
Use impact fees also as that contingency. There's money there.
So to that end, when we've gone through for things that are, going through the budget in general, are we just considering impact fees gravy, or I would hope that we're budgeting to use those that we have available where possible, right?
Oh, not as gravy, but it's to supplement the budget. That's what they're collecting for, that's what we use them for, to supplement the budget. Yep.
A similar question. So those are put away in categories that relate exactly to that expenditure item. So Parks and Rec specifically has impact fees based on that formula, and, okay. And then, just to clarify, was this the summer event that's free admission? Was that one? Okay, yeah, so you guys sort of got that?
Anything else for the Parks Department? Thank you.
Next is the Planning Department. The two increases you see there, the largest increases are the increase for the director. He's going to be taking on additional duties as the zoning official, as well as the planning director. So that's why he's getting more than the three percent increase. And also, he was able, Doug was able to obtain a municipal fellowship for a full-time staff member for a year and a half. So that seventy-one-two-eighty-nine that we have here in salary as a change is reimbursed to us by the state. That doesn't cost us anything. So basically, we have free labor for a year and a half based on a application Doug submitted to the state through the Planning and Housing Division and was able to secure Mr. Hagerty's position with the state, with the town. So we'll leave it at that. Doug's here, if you guys have any questions.
Clayne, thanks for coming in on a holy day of obligation for your people. You didn't bring a Guinness form or something? Any corned beef? Any comments, questions for the Planning Department? This, as you saw on your agenda, encompasses Planning Commission, Conservation Commission, Historic District Commission, Zoning Board, and Land Trust as well, so.
I can just, one comment on their budget. A line item that you'll see in the budget right now, under the Operations Housing Assistance Maintenance Program, I'll let Doug explain that briefly. But as you know, the CDBG program's getting up and running, you know, back to full force. So Doug's asked to include that line item for an additional program that he would like to get some initial seed money or assistance with, and I'll help him.
Yeah, we've, you'll see under the Operations section, three thousand dollars for a new line item, Housing Assistance Maintenance Program. The brief story is, this came as an idea from our new CDBG program manager, Jerry Manning. She's doing an excellent job. She is a cost-neutral to the town, but we've been able to reactivate our CDBG program at large. That does involve helping a lot of people with housing repair issues. Most of those projects end up being medium-to-larger-scale projects to help someone with their home when they're income-eligible. It could be fixing a roof, repairing broken stairs, that kind of thing. She's found that she's done a number of visits to homes and scoping projects, that some people have projects that are, you know, they're better off having an hour of a handyman to fix, you know, maybe an open electrical socket. It might be replacing a faucet. She had the concept that, why don't we consider funding a program at a low amount with the idea that there could be people that would benefit from having a handyman come in for an hour of time, and that would help them with a lot of issues in their house. These are things that generally wouldn't rise to the level of triggering a full CDBG application. So I think it's intended as to help someone on the ground. There would be income eligibility, establish parameters around it. It wouldn't be someone that said, I'd like a free handyman. It'd be people that are eligible and projects that generally don't make sense for it to go through the full grant program to establish. um, to establish. So we're thinking, you know, we kind of established there might be a limit that we would set on any individual to receive this. We're not looking for this to become the first person that raises their hand and says, "Can I get $3,000 in assistance?" Um, we're developing the program parameters. Uh, we might establish something as simple as a $300 max or a certain hourly max on what a handyman can do. We'd be looking to develop a relationship with people. We would ask for the, anybody that wants to help us to have insurance, so that there's no additional liability that the town would take on. The insurance would be covered by the handyman as an independent contractor. So it's, it's, it's meant to be kind of an offering to residents that, you know, this might be extremely helpful to them. Um, and, uh, you know, I think it could be a good use of $3,000 of, of town money.
Councilman Brown.
Can you explain the new role that he took on? I, I missed that.
So currently, we do not have a zoning official. Um, we are supposed to have his, a, a legal zoning official to make decisions when it comes to zoning. So we're going to give Doug that title through an ordinance that Solicitor's working on to give him those duties and responsibilities. Some municipalities have zoning officials as a sole job, a full-time salaried zoning official. So instead of going down that road, we're going to give Doug the additional 7% increase in salary to take on those additional duties.
So Carrie in the office, I, she's a zoning officer?
Yeah, Carrie, Carrie does work, a portion of her job is as the zoning enforcement officer. This, uh, would eventually, the, the nature of the planning director position and the, Carrie's position has always been, uh, that the director would sign off on certain decisions. Uh, Carrie would help with initial inspections of properties and she'd be eyes on the ground, and then the director reviews and signs off on decisions. Uh, there's a number of ways in which state law has, uh, elevated the duties that are associated with that. Um, typically, the, the state law refers to it as a zoning enforcement officer. We, we need to go through a process to officially designate that. There's been a, a matter of practice that we've had here in the town, and we want to formalize that, uh, to ensure if there's any issues uh, with challenges to interpretations, challenges to the documentation, that we're fully backed up. Uh, so I think there'll be a formalization of that, um, coming. Uh, to be honest, some of it is that there's duties that, that the position is always taken on, but I think they're elevating in terms of a formal responsibility and a signatory on a lot of actions.
Thanks, Director.
Yep.
Solicitor Angel.
Doug did a great job. Um, we've had good dialogue on this to remedy some of these and bring it into conformance with state law. That'll be coming before you, so, yep, made the point.
Anything else for the planning director? Okay.
And finally, for tonight, Chief Heiss and the police department and all of his, uh, departments, the only one that's not his is fire dispatch. I included that under him, but that's a separate contract that we have with, with Hopkins Hill, and that's just a, uh, we can go over it, but it's just a, basically, the, uh, increase per the current contract for fire dispatch. Um, but the chief will discuss anything else regarding animal control, crossing guards, dispatchers, EMA, and the police sworn officers.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
You want to, uh, give a summary for us?
Sure. Uh, so we start with the 710, the, uh, police, um, officers section. Uh, we currently have 49 full-time employees, uh, under officers under that. This budget also includes four for the August academy, uh, two for the January academy, one lateral, which would begin at, uh, right now, uh, when this budget would be approved, uh, bringing us to a total number of 56 officers, uh, if we were able to fully staff that. I'm not sure if you have any specific questions about any other sections.
Councilman Pasqua.
I know in the past, we've briefly talked about a possible traffic division, whether it's small or large or, or what have you, to address a lot of the traffic issues in town. Is, is there anything in here that we can move around or, or attempt to try and talk about something like that? And put this in a, put it in a budget?
I think it's just the bodies. Right now, we don't have the bodies to create that separate entity. Um, obviously, the biggest driver of overtime is patrol. So we have minimum manning within the patrol division, so to take people out of patrol and put them in traffic, all that would do is, it would basically increase your overtime budget. It would give us the opportunity to do more traffic enforcement, but at the expense of overtime. So, I, I won't speak for the chief, but could you do it? Yes, but it's gonna be an increase to the budget, a pretty big increase to the budget, in my opinion.
Like, like what? What are we?
I mean, it depends how big you want in the traffic division, or you want one, two, three people? That's probably whatever those salaries are, had to be made up if they're getting pulled from patrol. So, say you want a two-person traffic division, that's two, two peoples, about $180,000, I would say. That's just my assumption, if, if that was the plan, but again, I can let the chief speak to that.
So, currently, the way we're staffed, um, it would cause issues with ordering. So currently, a lot of the low men are getting ordered in constantly.
Gotcha.
So that would make an increase on that, they would get ordered even more. So currently, without, with the numbers we have, we can't do it.
Gotcha, okay.
But if we're gonna get up to 56, that, that's something we can explore, for sure.
Okay, is, I mean, I, I know we talked about this before, moving the, you know, we did some work with the CBA to try and attract people to get to that 56. I mean, what's it? Have we seen any improvement in staffing with that, or?
Within the last year, we, we hired four, but we lost two. Uh, one went to another department and one retired, so. You're gaining slowly, um, but it takes almost a year before you even get somebody on the road, both the academy, to the FTO process, and then on the road, so, and it also be a recurring part.
Other members of the council. Vice President Verducci.
Just so I can understand, I see the, um, vehicle line for the 80K roughly. Is that, are we talking fuel, or that's not actual vehicle purchases, right?
Last line for 83,000? Yeah, that's including one vehicle. We're trying to get, similar to, you know, some of the other departments. We're trying to get in the budget where we're constantly replacing vehicles, so that's the estimated cost for one new vehicle. That's all the accessories and everything, fully outfitted.
Anyone else, or? Um, can you, are you able to help with a breakdown of? And I'm, I apologize, I know we go over this a lot, but I have, I need to better understand how we're arriving at our overtime total? So, is there a breakdown to understand, is it mostly higher rank positions that are getting overtime? Is it mostly those at the lower officer level? Um, you know, I'm just trying to, and I also don't have a grasp of what is a normal overtime budget, comparatively speaking, compared to other municipalities, like, I just want to get a sense of how we're arriving there.
So, there's minimum manning.
Yeah, of course.
With that, this is, majority of it is caused by lower ranking. It's not, wouldn't be like captains. It could be a lieutenant, but generally, it's, it's in the patrol end, lower end of the patrol end. They would be filled by, it could be any rank that could fill those spots when it's vacant. As far as, um, so if we had, right now, just to give an example, so we're currently staffed at 49 officers, but we're not operating with 49 officers, with FMLA and with, um, OJIs and, uh, people out, long-term injuries or, or illnesses, um, we're operating around the 42 to 43 officers. So, with that, with a five-man minimum, anytime somebody takes a vacation, they're out sick or anything else, it's automatic overtime. And plus, we have, um, we currently have vacant spots, so those are automatically overtime. So, all those things put together, it just.
So, it sounds like it's just the high turnover and then not being able to quickly fill.
Right, it's, it's just the staffing, our staffing levels.
So, we really made, I think, the council previous to this, I think, made a big effort to, to overhaul, to make sure that we were competitive and what we were attracting, right? And it sounds like that put a, a Band-Aid over a, a larger wound than it can actually, it sounds like there's still some bleeding. So I guess my question is, and obviously you can't divulge much given personnel, but wha, what is, what are still reasons why we're losing folks? What can we do to retain? Because that's where the, that's where this overtime, I mean, I look at F, actual FY24, almost $1.1 million in overtime. And then, I don't know what, we're, we're only up to February 28th here, and we're at 68, $687,000 in overtime. So, I get, I mean, this, and the, the, what we budget for overtime is over a percentage of a, for a levy increase. So like, these are the kinds of things I think the council needs to sink its teeth into to really understand how we can get this under control and support you. So like, what, what are, what are we missing? What are other departments doing? I, I'm all ears.
So, other departments are also struggling with the same thing.
Yeah.
We lost one person to Newport, and, and before, we lost several others to, into Pawtucket. Pawtucket's a really big contender because of better contract, better post-retirement benefits. That's where we're losing officers, they're, they're going to those agencies. Um, and on top of, we've had normal retirements where people have been up to the 23 years and they're now retiring. So, it's, it's a compounded thing with losing people to other departments and retirement, so. As far as hiring, we actually reduced our, um, we used to require an associate when I got hired. We lowered it to 30 credits, and now we go with anyone with a high school diploma. So we're trying to make any efforts to gain anyone that could be, um, worthy, so to speak, um, to hire them.
Yeah, and we're competing with departments that are offering signing bonuses. I mean, if the department's offering five to six to $7,000 in signing bonuses, I mean, that's not where we want to be right now, I think. Our salary is comparable. Could it be higher? Yes, I think that's gonna be part of, a big part of negotiations in, in a couple of years. But I think it's the profession as a whole is not drawing what it used to draw. That's just the nature of the beast right now, and I think we're trying to do the best. Um, Captain Wood and his team go out there and they, they go to all the recruitments and they do it to fit to serve, and we host fit to serve here, and, um, we, we go above and beyond, but when you're competing like Pawtucket, 20 years, you can retire and get your full pension. It's tough to compete with that, the signing bonuses. All these things really, all, with the chief said, all these factors really contribute to why we're, we're low right now.
So, I know that we, there's legislation proposed at the state level that would help with when we get poached, the community that takes the officer, whether, with, if it's within a certain number of years when they get out of the academy, they have to reimburse that community a certain number, so hopefully that helps, but nothing to the extent of what we're shelling out in overtime due to being understaffed, so. Something I think to flag, but thank you for the, the color.
And I think that overtime, well, from, from my experience, I think Johnston was about 1 million, 1.1 million around there when I was there.
How many officers does Johnston have?
65.
So they've got almost, what, 20 more officers on the road right now?
Ten, about 10 to 12 more, yeah, yeah.
65 budgeted, or 65 actually working?
65 budgeted.
We're, we're 58 budgeted, correct?
Yes, 57, yeah. Yeah, I don't know what their current staffing level is, but, again, I think it's a, it's a problem throughout the whole industry right now.
Councilman the Blank.
Thank you, uh, just a couple of things here, um, as it relates to the police. See that healthcare waivers, uh, do you guys normally pay that, like, towards the end of the year? Is that why it's currently zero for actuals, but we budgeted 213,000?
Usually takes place, uh, in July.
In July, alright, so it has, that would be the beginning of the year, though.
Begin, excuse me, beginning of the fiscal year, but it's for the, what they didn't take in the previous year? So when, at June 30th, we'll accrue that back.
Okay, that makes sense.
And that will show up June 30th.
That was number one. Number two, um, I believe last year, Mr. Sabetti, I had asked for a headcount, uh, FTE per department to be added to the budget sheets. Um, is that something that you could provide us?
Yeah, we'll put that together for the presentation next week.
Awesome. Thank you very much, that would be helpful. And then my last question, uh, kind of relates, sorry, it's not police-esque, but it's still town-esque. Um, it kind of relates to my healthcare stipend question. When you're looking into the, the healthcare waivers, could you also look into the, the matches that each town provides? Because I believe currently, correctly from Long, uh, Coventry provides a 10% match. Uh, is that an accurate statement?
Currently, uh, local 94 is at 16%, and went up to 16, it was 15%, it went up to 16% for local 94 and non-union personnel. It goes up to 17% on January 1st of 2026, and police officers in their contract, it has a set dollar amount, not a percentage.
I think, I think you're talking health, I'm talking 401K, like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm talking retirement, sorry. Uh, as it relates to a retirement plan, isn't the employer match for Coventry 10% currently?
Correct, up to 10% as long as the employee.
It, it matches 10, yeah. Can you, uh, just see what other channels are doing when you're, uh, looking up the health stuff?
I'll check that, again, keep, keep in mind that we're probably one of the only communities I know about that, uh, deal with a, um, defined contribution versus a defined benefit plan.
Yeah.
So, uh, when you're mentioning the 10%, that's 10% for any employees that were hired after June 30th of 2013, I believe.
Perfect, I just want to, I wanted to know where we stand.
Any other communities offer that?
Yeah, great, appreciate it, thanks.
Councilman Capaldi.
Would it make sense to look into, um, the sign, sign-on bonus in comparison to the over a million dollars we're paying for overtime? Maybe if you have a sign-on bonus to get you to the cap that you need?
See, but then the sign-on bonus, you can't make that person stay, so you can come, take that sign-on.
There's no stipulations with that, everywhere else there is.
Hire them to stay for a certain amount of time. So now we're out that money and we're out the officer, yes, yes. Um, anything else for police?
I just want to make one comment if I can, so, also, just to remind everybody, but in the police, under their benefits, where you see retire, OPEB, that amount budgeted, proposed this year, 244,396. That includes $150,000 contribution going into the OPEB trust fund. That's an increase of 50,000 from the previous year. Current fiscal year, we budgeted 100,000. We're looking to fund that OPEB trust. Again, increase a little each year, so that's 150,000. Thank you.
Anything else for police? Alright, thank you, Chief. Or I'm, I'm sorry, if you want to go to the next part of your budget there. Civilians on dispatch.
That's just a regular, the 3% increase, I think, the contractual increase, 3%. Don't see anything else on police civilian non-dispatch.
Anything for dispatch?
We definitely increased the overtime, um. There's still some employees that have quite a bit of COVID comp time, uh, hanging around, so. Um, based on that, the chief asked for a, an increase, uh, people starting to utilize that time, so we increased that line by 10,000.
More control?
Those were the same with the COVID comp.
Do we have that facility in our capital improvement plan at all? I've heard that it's in rough shape. I haven't been inside in a long time.
So we were gonna utilize that, um, to Lisa as our CDS application, um, but she said would not qualify. It's not considered part of the police department, so, um, it really wouldn't qualify for that designation, but, um, Captain Wood has, uh, spoken to, I had him reach out to, uh, the architect that just built one in, I think, North Providence, Johnston, Smithfield have a joint one. So, I asked him just to come down and kind of take a look at ours and give us an idea of what we're looking at, and, I thought maybe a refer, a refer, refurbishment would be possible, but he basically said, it's, it's not worth saving, you gotta build something. You got to build something brand new. I don't have any numbers on that. I don't want to commit any money to it at this time, but yeah, that facility needs a total we have overall.
It's actually pushed out another following year for capital, just as we were exploring.
EMA? Decrease, so I guess keep scrolling?
That's when we, it was the hazard mitigation plan of us, we removed that.
Bobby, want to discuss your pet peeve? Crossing guards?
It's, I believe it's part-time.
It's actually supplied, it's part-time, but it's also funded by EMPG grant.
Yeah.
Salary is half by us.
What's the function?
Oh, we'd be working on plans for the town. It could be hazmatization, it could be.
Gotcha. Gotcha, okay. On that.
And then the school crossing guards are also part of the chief's budget. Don't know why, but that's where it lies, so that's pretty much level funded.
Okay. Anything else, Chief?
No.
Any last words from the council? All right.
Thank you.
And then, as you can see, the fire dispatch fees, Department 799, that's the contract we have currently. I believe this is the last year of the contract. Is that accurate, Chief? Yeah, I believe this is the last year of the contract we have for our fire dispatch. So depending on what happens with the Muni Fire Commission, we'll have to revisit that at some point. That's the level funded.
Any comments from the council on what we've heard tonight? Given kind of some of the questions we've had tonight and some areas we're looking to dive deeper into, I wonder if it might be appropriate to refer this slate this evening and I would ask the same tomorrow to our finance committee and see if we can get that group together with the finance director and the town manager before April 8th. So I don't know if the council has appetite for that or what the pleasure is, but we'd need to formally move to refer these budgets, budget proposals to the finance committee.
What would you be looking for from, back from the finance committee then? A?
I'd love, we asked a number of questions of the finance director this evening and I almost blanked it, some comparisons. There were questions about, yeah.
I can just give a quick summary, FTE by department. I would also like to know existing FTE versus what we're asking for new positions, just because that's, can help with some of the levers. I think you're going to research healthcare waivers, other municipalities, and the employer match, if there's other municipalities that have a 401K or retirement plan and what the match would be. Those were, I think, a few of my requests at least.
The other thing too, I want to throw out there as well is that I'd like this, if we, if the council refers this, can we get on the record right now? I always like to have this legend going into budget season, or key rather. What amount is equivalent to a 1% levy increase? What amount is equivalent to a half a percent? I think that's helpful, so that way we can, we know what we need to work towards, because obviously, the budget we have right now is technically not in compliance with state law, the proposed budget anyway, because we need to stay within the 4%. So if we can get that number, we can get that number now, I think that's helpful. Councilman LeBlanc.
Did we talk about the fact that Coventry is now a distressed community? Did we talk about that?
No, but I think that's something we definitely want to make sure is presented with the manager's budget next week.
That's fair.
Presentation.
Just wanted to call it out because it's something new this year.
So do we have that number?
I can get you the updated figure. I can look at that tomorrow, but off the top of my head, you're probably around $850,000 is a 1% increase in the levy, in that range, but I'll get that for you in detail tomorrow. But just to, you know, comment on where you're at, so we're showing in the current proposed budget, we have an increase of, proposed of 4.84%, but our levy increase is only 2.44%. So we're in compliance with state law.
Gotcha.
As presented. Again, with all the revenue sources, so obviously, significant increase in state aid for education, as Councilman LeBlanc just mentioned, the distressed community aid. So all that aid goes into, into the budget, but when we're looking at the levy, we're currently looking, as presented right now, it'd be a 2.44% increase in the levy. But I can get you that actual number. Obviously, I don't have the full, you know, valuation at this point, but just based on what last year's tax certification, I'll confirm with you that exact number tomorrow utilizing last year's.
So that would be my preference. I'm speaking for myself. I think that this should be referred to finance, so those details can be worked out among a smaller work group, so that by the time we get a budget on April 8th to vote on provisionally, we have those meat and potatoes worked out in a forum that's not rushed and that's had what at that point would have been three weeks to work on some of these things. So that would be my preference. Vice President Verducci.
Okay, so that makes a lot more sense. I didn't know we were doing requests for Bob. I have a couple too, but, so you weren't looking for us to redo it and pass it back? It's more to follow up on these. And then from a big picture perspective, another thing I think would be helpful, even if it's just the last few-year look back, you're trying to do some good things here that pay down long-term debt, you know, like you mentioned with the OPEB and other things. Might be nice just to see where the liabilities have gone, you know, even if it's three, four, or five years, just to see, you know, get the directional look at that. It would just be another piece we could look at. And then similarly to the president's request, you know, what those levy increases translate to on the average household? So just one step further of, you know, is this $30 in my bill? Is this $5? Is it $100 kind of thing? So that's all I have.
I'm not looking for a new budget to come out of finance, but what would be great is maybe if a memo, a one-page sheet comes out of the finance committee that says, this is the conclusion of the questions we asked and we worked out. And oh, by the way, given that information, here are some changes we might recommend this council consider the night of the conference. That's, that would be my preference, but I'll wait to hear the pleasure of the council on that.
I'm all for it. I already actually reached out to JP and asked if we could already meet, so definitely can add this to the agenda.
So a formal motion to refer these budgets this evening to the finance committee.
Make that motion.
A motion by Councilman Pasqua.
The second.
Second by Councilman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right. Any further comment on the budget before we move on? Right? We'll move to public comment for undocketed items. Those items not on our agenda this evening. Those in council chambers, come forward to the podium, turn on the mic, state your name and address for the record. Members of the public on Zoom, raise your hand to be let in and unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. Public comment on undocketed items. Public comment going once, twice, three times. Public comment is now closed. And at this time, I will take a motion to adjourn at 7:38 PM.
Make the motion.
Motion by Councilman LeBlanc.
Second.
Second by Councilman Capaldi. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we stand adjourned.